Call to order, the planning commission meeting for Thursday, December 17th, 2020. Please stand and join us in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Harlecker, will you please call the roll?
Yeah, roll call. Commissioner Knoblock?
Here.
Commissioner Casey?
Here.
Commissioner Heikla?
Here.
Commissioner Geisler?
Here.
Commissioner Schmalki?
Here.
Chair Schwartz?
Here.
Commissioner Bradley is not at the meeting tonight.
First order of business this evening is to adopt our agenda. Motion by Heikla, second by Geisler, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Agenda is adopted. First order of business is to adopt, approve the minutes of our November 19th meeting.
I'll move to approve minutes.
Second?
Motion by Schmalki, second by Geisler, any corrections or additions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Epstein.
Minutes are approved with one abstention, Commissioner Knoblock. Our first order of new business this evening is planning case 20-15, a subdivision extension, exception at 9032 Norway Street, Dennis Trong, Mr. Harlecker.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners. Can I get the PowerPoint back up? This is a subdivision exception, complete a lot line adjustment between parcel at 799 90th Avenue and 9032 Norway Street. The two properties involved are outlined here, this is the property on 90th, this one here is the property on Norway Street. What is being proposed, and it's the area being adjusted, is this triangular piece here, it's about 1,214 square feet, and a new lot line is being drawn at this location here, and this lot line here is going away. So this triangular piece will be added to lot three, and the remainder of the parcel on 90th will be parcel B. Both parcels, both lots currently comply with the dimensional requirements of the LDR2 zoning district, and both lots will be in compliance with the dimensional requirements should this subdivision exception be approved. Track A is also shown on the survey really for reference only, this track here is owned by the property owners of lot three, and this triangular piece will give them access to that parcel there. With that, staff is recommending that the planning commission approve the proposed subdivision exception with the condition that new easements and easement vacations be recorded. New easements will be required on this property line here, and they're also putting in drainage on utility easements along track A. Some easements, this easement here, will be, go through the vacation process. Engineering is currently reviewing the legal descriptions for those easements to make sure they're accurate. Once that's done, the vacations and the easement acceptance will be processed by the city council as a separate, as a separate process apart from the subdivision exception. The applicant is in the audience tonight, and his representative is attending via Zoom.
Mr. Harlecker, commission, any questions for Mr. Harlecker? All right, is there anything the petitioner would like to add?
I don't know, I'm sorry.
Okay.
All right.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Casey.
Mr. Harlecker, are there houses on these lots, these separate ones, or is there just...
Yes, Commissioner Casey, there are houses on both lot three and lot one. Track A is vacant.
Okay, so, and this is amenable to both parties?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Knoblock.
I have a question for Mr. Harlecker. So are there any, is this just an administrative task, or is there further registering of the parcel required?
Yeah, Commissioner Knoblock, there is a form that is completed, and that gets recorded at the county to record the new lot lines. It's a document, and then the survey is attached to it.
So it's purely administrative, it's not, it doesn't involve any financial or anything with the county?
Well, the, the, the document that we put together, the city puts together, there is a recording fee for that, but, yes, it's once, should the planning commission approve the subdivision exception, the recording of the document is an administrative process.
And there's no fees, as in, like, when a new property is, like, park dedication or anything like that?
Oh, no, there's not.
Nothing? Okay, good. All right, that's it, thanks.
Any other questions? All right, at this time, we do need to have a public hearing, so I will open a public hearing in planning case 20-15, a subdivision exception at 9032 Norway Street. Anyone here wishing to speak at the public hearing? Anyone wish to speak? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of planning case 2015, the subdivision exception at 9032 Norway Street, Dennis Trong, with the following conditions, the required new easement and easement vacations be recorded.
Motion by Geisler, second by Schmalki, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. This is a decision by the planning commission and can be appealed to the city council within 10 days if someone so chooses, otherwise, good luck. Our second case this evening on the new business, planning case 20-16, a conditional use permit for a fitness center at 3050 Coon Rapids Boulevard, Brad Kohler, Mr. Harlecker.
Yes, Chair and Commissioners, this is a conditional use request for a fitness center, property located at 3050 Coon Rapids Boulevard, it's this building here, it will actually be occupying the back 8,000 square feet, back in here, this is the boulevard here, 111th, and the city-owned property to the, to the east. This is a space that the applicants will be converting to a fitness center, it will be including kind of a juice bar area for clients after they go through their, their fitness routine, it will not be open to the public, just for those in attendance of the classes. Here's a close-up of the site, they will actually be occupying this back piece of the building here. Parking will be provided here, there's 13 spaces here, code requires 20 spaces, there's room back in this area here for an additional seven spaces to meet that parking requirement. There is a chain link fence with razor wire across the top out here, back from the days when it was Rapid Sports and they kept inventory outside. Staff is recommending that should the planning commission approve the conditional use permit, one of the conditions is that this fencing be removed. There's also barbed wire, razor wire across this back stockade fence here, that privacy fence, that should also be removed. That type of fencing, the razor wire, is not permitted by current code, so that would be that. The applicant is in the audience tonight, and he can go through kind of the, how his business will operate, the different classes and things like that. Typically, they'll run Monday through Thursday in the morning, and then evening classes, Monday through Thursday, and then Saturday classes on Saturday morning. He indicated that the class sizes will range 20 to 30 people per session. With that, staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit with the condition that the chain link fence and barbed wire along the east and south sides of the site be removed, and the barbed wire on the top of the privacy fence on the west side also be removed, and compliance with Title 11 City Code, and the parking lot be restriped to include a minimum of 20 parking spaces. With that, I'll answer the questions in the audience, Mr. Kohler is in the, he's in the audience tonight to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Harlecker, commission, excuse me, commission, any questions for Mr. Harlecker?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Casey.
Mr. Harlecker, are those two buildings linked?
Yes, they are.
So there's passage back and forth between them, but they're not...
I believe so, I know there's, there's de minimis walls separating them because they've got different businesses leasing space in there, so...
And those aren't related?
They are not related, no.
Okay, because they all have the same address, you know, the 3050, all those buildings?
They are, but they probably got a different suite number.
Okay, all right, differentiate it that way. Do they share parking spots at all, or no?
Do park?
Will they share some parking spots?
Um...
They won't have to, maybe?
They probably won't have to, there's available parking over here, and parking across the front.
Yeah.
This parking is kind of isolated, and would really only service the area that'll be occupied by the fitness center.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Harlecker?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Harlecker, did, has the city gone over a rough sketch of that parking layout that will get it to 20 with the applicant already, or is it just based on square footage is where you're pretty sure you'll...
I've done a rough layout to see if they would fit.
Okay, and that, because those are currently angled parking, I was assuming getting everything else to lay out so there's a full pattern in there?
Right, and there's room for perpendicular parking here, and a 24-foot drive aisle behind it, and you can probably get about nine, figure about nine spaces here, and then there's room for an additional three or four spaces along that edge of the parking lot there.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Harlecker? All right, the petitioner'd like to give his comments, please, come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Brad Kohler, my address is 10525 95th Place North, Maple Grove, 55369.
And is there any, anything you want to add to what Mr. Harlecker's stated?
Yeah, there would be additional parking in the front party area there on the side, where the tenants in front there would allow us to use, which I believe is another seven or eight, so that wouldn't be too big, the classes are usually around 20 in the average, sometimes we get a, you know, it's 30 at the most, but that's when they come in, like, they'll bring a guest or something with them, so it's not like additional parking would be needed, but it's a predominant, well, it's a women's only gym, so it's not like men and women, so it's just a women's only gym.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmalki.
So the, the building that's in front of a Coon Rapids Boulevard, that's occupied right now, correct?
It is.
And so is that a business that is going to be operating at the same time, in the same hours that yours is?
Typically, sorry, no.
I was just gonna say, could somebody could just kind of share where their parking currently is?
When we're closed, other businesses are usually operational, like, 9 to 5, we're closed. We usually get busy, you know, 4:30 to 8:30 at night is when we have our classes, and then 5:00 AM till 7:30 AM is when we have our classes. During the day, we just don't operate, you know, sometimes I'll do a physical therapy training with people who need additional work, but it's one or two people, we don't really have classes scheduled through the day.
Do, do you have to do a lot of remodeling inside to adopt your business?
They've already reconstructed the whole place, just one big open room, and it's just group training, so we put the foam mats out, dumbbells, exercise balls, it's just low-impact CrossFit type of training. We do have some weight training for the ladies, but mostly it's just one big open room, so... This is our second location, our first one is in Maple Grove, and we've been there over a year, and it's very successful, so...
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Are you gonna have any showers, locker room type facilities?
No showers, just bathroom.
Where's the juice bar gonna go in?
The juice bar will be in this corner, right here, this one right there.
Right in there?
Mm-hmm, just before the ladies' dressing room will be back here, so that's the ladies' dressing room back here, and then these are the dressing rooms back here.
Okay.
So, the far back corner, and then the rest is wide open, so all those other rooms have already been gutted out, and it's one big open room now.
And as far as the fencing, you have no problem, or what are your plans as far as removing the fencing?
I'll let the owners know. I mean, it's not my building, I have to, I'd have to let them know, it's gonna be part of the process, I guess, you know? I don't think they're, I don't think they knew that this was gonna have to happen either,
So you're not gonna be open from 5:00 AM until 8:30 PM, straight through?
No, no, not, not as a, like, running classes, I mean, like I said, if somebody came in, like, if we had somebody that was injured and couldn't participate in the group classes, and they'd do strength training on the side to get to that part, we have some ladies that are very obese that need to go do additional training, like, we have two people in Maple Grove that we have that situation for, and it's like, in the afternoon, 12 o'clock, they come in for an hour, and we work with them to get stronger and stronger until they can participate in group classes, or somebody that's injured, but if they're, you know, injured or something like that, we still want to keep working with them until they're capable, you know, of being part of the rest of the group. So during the day, 9 to 5, or 8 to 5, there were probably just two employee cars there and a couple of clients only, and that's how we run it in Maple Grove, and it's, like I said, it's very successful this way, it's very easy.
So most, most of your classes are from 5 to 9, and then in the evening? Commission, any other questions for the petitioner at this time? All right, thank you, we may have more questions for you later. All right, we do need to have a public hearing on this matter, so at this time I will open a public hearing in planning case 20-16, a conditional use permit for a fitness center at 3050 Coon Rapids Boulevard. Anyone here wish to speak at this public hearing? Please come up to the microphone, give your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Terrell Johnson, I live at 7172 West River Road in Brooklyn Center. So the reason why I'm here, because I've been knowing Brad for about 10 years now, and I work, I have a company called Just Love, and I work with a lot of youth that have barriers, I have a lot of youth that don't have the same opportunities of all races, creeds, and colors, and Brad is one of the people that has helped me, the reason why we became so close is I brought kids into the gym, he's helped to mentor them, we've had classes in my phone, I got countless photos of us mentoring, him mentoring these youths, so, and Korean youth, a lot of people don't know the Korean population in St. Paul who I work with, and so they're the ones that actually helped him to do the juice bar in Maple Grove, so they're really excited about this as well, so it's not just about him being a business owner and having his gym, but it's about opportunities for youth, mentoring youth all over, I work in the Twin Cities, so he's not just a, just a business owner that, you know, about, you know, health and fitness, but it's about mental fitness and helping these youth and young adults reach their goals and things of that nature, so that's why we've connected and done a lot of things together, because he's a great mentor, we mentor together, we've had class together, and we bring kids in just to show them what's possible, so, yeah, so that's really why I came from St. Paul, brushed over here, because I wanted that, I think that's really important to know as well, some of the other work that he does that we do together.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak at the public hearing? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, and commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmalki.
I just have one question, actually, back to Mr. Harlecker again on the fence, I guess I'm just a little bit confused, I understand the requirement for the chain link fence to be able to remove that, but since the property owner isn't here to support that they can do that, are we, are we still able to have that as a condition?
I heard most of it, the rationale behind that, excuse me, is the conditional use permit goes with the property.
Sure.
So if we get another fitness center in there, they can operate under that conditional use permit, so this is a, the CUP is a benefit to the property owner as well.
Okay.
So it's the city's opportunity to bring things that are non-compliant and ISOs up to City Code when you get conditional use permits or site plans.
Got it.
And so we try to take those opportunities and bring the properties closer to compliance when it's, when it's applicable.
So if, if the property owner did not refuse to remove the fencing, then the conditional use permit cannot be issued?
Correct.
And you understand that?
I like the idea, I'll see it done.
Okay.
It is an ISO.
I just want to make sure that everybody's aware. Thank you.
And Mr. Harlecker, just for clarification, the barbed wire on the fence needs to be removed in total?
Correct.
But we're also removing the chain link fence along the east and south sides?
Correct.
Is there a reason that we're removing those fences?
Again, it's, it's an ISO, and there's no reason for it to be there anymore, the reason it was there was provide security for inventory for Rapid Sports. Typically, we don't allow fencing around commercial parking lots.
Okay, it's my understanding that there's also a gated fence or whatever to gain entrance to this area, is that gonna remain, or is that gonna also be gone?
Well, that would be removed, I think that the gated areas in here, cars come in and go out, there might be a gate across here.
But the gate, the gate on the front of the building, that's gonna also be removed, do we need to include that as a condition?
The gate on the front of the building?
From that front driveway area, as I recall, or at least there used to be a gate, so that the people that were using the front half of that building didn't have access to that back half of the parking lot?
Yes, staff would recommend that that be included, and if the commission's comfortable adding that language, that's, that's fine, it's my intention to include all the chain link fencing down the east and south sides.
So condition number four would be removal of any gate or fencing on, at the front of the property?
Do we need to be specific on the front, is that the north side, I'm not quite sure, I don't remember picturing that myself.
Mr. Chair, all of, all of that gating is chain link, so I think if we just encompass that all chain link fencing be removed from the property, that should, that should cover us, keep it simple. Mr. Chair, I do have a question for Mr. Harlecker.
Commissioner Geisler.
To clarify, on condition three, the minimum of 20 parking spaces, so as Commissioner Casey pointed out, this is all one property number with multiple suites, by my count, there's 28, 27, 29-ish already associated with that property, do we need to be more specific about where those stalls should go, because otherwise this property would be in conformance with that, if I'm reading that correctly?
Oh, yeah, Commissioner Geisler, that would be appropriate, we could add language that those additional parking spaces be located on the south side of the building.
And so with that, I mean, again, since we're looking at a singular space here, it's kind of a challenge, because we don't have it tied down to a suite number, so this entire property could be used as a fitness center, correct? Is that, is that how this would be interpreted?
I would say no, it would be based on the floor plans and documentation that was submitted as part of the conditional use permit.
Okay.
If they wanted to expand into other parts of the building, they'd have to come back and amend the conditional use permit.
Okay.
So it just applies to that back side, right, that the conditional use permit is just for the back building?
Right, the space that the commission reviewed tonight.
Okay, yeah.
So to finalize my question there, so staff's recollections, there are 13 stripes, stripe spaces in the southern half, if that, if condition three were to be revised to say add an additional seven stalls to that southern lot to get to that 20, to make it clear that that's what we're looking for, not 20 total on the whole property?
That would, yep, that'd be fine.
All right, commission, anybody ready to make a motion?
I got one.
Okay.
Quick, quick question, is there anything proposed or required, or the exterior of this building to change it, to dress it up, or anything planned for that?
Um, no, no, there was not.
Nothing?
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Knoblock.
Yeah, I think with what Mr. Heikla brought up, I think the removal of the east and the south fencing will help alleviate the exterior of the building, because I think the fencing and its openness is, is probably the greatest risk with the barbed wire and the appearance, and the deterioration of the fence, that might actually allow more space to be opened up for parking, and make it a little, a little bit more open, so I think that will help address the exterior, because I believe the proposal is mostly an internal development inside the building.
Is anything required for signage?
At this point, no, there are signs out front, they could use space on those existing pylon signs with the appropriate sign permit.
You're talking about the space on the corner at the boulevard, right?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, there are multiple signs out there.
If you wanted to put wall signage up on the building... If he wanted to put wall signage up on the building, he could with the appropriate permits.
Okay.
And Mr. Harlecker, we have no necessity of, any corrections, or additions, or changes to landscaping?
Um, I deny, that wasn't included in the recommendation, no.
Because we are right next to the city park there, that possibly something to, to screen the parking lot of some, to some degree, or?
That certainly could be added if the commission wants to. Typically, parking lots, the street trees are required at forty-foot intervals, and a landscaped hedge or buffer combination is required between the parking lot and the right-of-way. This was a new development, that would certainly be included in their, in the landscape plan.
What's Commission's thoughts?
What they have here will be, is really consistent with the rest of the site, as far as along Coon Rapids Boulevard, or 111th.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmoki.
Is it a requirement that we have them include the fencing at this time, or?
Pardon me?
Is it a requirement that we have for the conditional use permit that the, that be added? I just am wondering again what our intent here is. It's like, I want to bring it up to code, definitely, if it needs to be brought up to code or anything like that. So, is that a requirement, or is that just a nice to have to include that?
If I understood you correctly, there's nothing in the code that requires, it's really up to the discretion of the commission, if they want to require additional landscaping.
We are having to remove the fencing. Is the land, I haven't driven by it recently, so I don't know if it's, if it's lacking, and if this is an opportunity, or if this is, if it's a necessity. Would it, would it delay the petitioner from being able to begin the business until that is complete? It's like, does the fence have to be removed, and the, and with the landscaping have to be updated before the petitioner could actually start doing business? Kind of what's the?
Typically, we allow up to a year-
Okay.
-to, to make the improvements.
I guess we don't have a plan for the landscaping, so it's hard to, hard to say that they would have to add landscaping, unless you have specifics on what would be necessary-
Pardon?
-or recommended. Okay, so I understand, the recommendation is to have, to add some landscaping, correct?
Well, I'm just questioning whether we need to add landscaping.
Okay. You were questioning if there's a need. Okay, I thought the question was to add it.
I got, in my opinion, I mean, we've got four or five over stories on the south property line, and quite a material amount along the line that's the adjacent apartment buildings, along with that privacy fence, which is, would be my primary concern. You know, right now, the chain link fence is running down the middle of that arguably oversized median that's there. I mean, that's all got to come out. It's a bad time to plant anyway. I guess I, I, to Commissioner Schmoki's comment, I, I do have concerns about the chain link fence being present with all the razor wire, where customers are coming in there. I mean, we don't necessarily want that, especially since both entrances are gated. Those, removing the gates would be probably relatively trivial, but ripping everything out while the ground's frozen is a pain. But the barbed wire, I think, is where my main concern is from an operations perspective goes. Beauty, beautifying it later, I mean, I think I would always encourage enhanced landscaping, but again, that's probably back to the combination of what can we require versus how is it deficient? And I think without a staff analysis of what is missing in the landscaping space, I'd have a hard time making a solid recommendation of what we would want there, without shooting from the hip, kind of, and I'd rather not do that on a requirement that is adding cost to the applicant. Since we're taking out stuff, and that's going to be a material cost anyway, that's a lot of material to get out of there and handle safely, and I'm assuming you got to pay somebody special to remove razor wire, barbed wire?
So, that requirement stays, or recommendation stays, and then we waive the landscaping? It's not a, not a good time of year, anyway?
Yeah, there is no landscaping.
At this time, there is no landscaping.
Yeah, okay. So, I don't see any point in inserting it either.
All right.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Heikla.
Is there anything with, any repairs, and anything needs to be done with the parking lot, or does that go to the property owner?
That would be the responsibility of the property owner. Typically, parking lot maintenance falls on the property owner. When it gets to a certain point, yes, it's got to be repaired.
To your, to your knowledge, though, the parking lot is in?
It's, yeah, yeah. It's, it's still, it's not in a state of disrepair.
Commissioner Casey.
I'll make a motion. In Planning Case 20-16, I recommend we approve the proposed conditional use permit with the following conditions. All chain link fence and barbed wire along the east and south sides of the site be removed, and the barbed wire on top of the privacy fence on the west side of the site also be removed. That it be in compliance with Title XI of city code, and the parking lot be restripped to include a minimum of twenty parking spaces.
I'll second that. Motion by Casey, second by Heikla?
Nabla.
Oh, Nabla, I'm sorry. Second by Nabla. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed. Motion carries. This is a decision by the planning commission, and can be appealed to the city council within ten days if someone saw chooses. Otherwise, good luck. And other business? Mr. Harlecker, anything that you have to inform us under other business?
Yes, next month, we've got two items. One is a auto repair business in another portion of this building, on the back, on the, beyond the west side of the building. And we've got the JCPenney Building up in Riverdale. Excuse me. The development is under new ownership, and they're repurposing the JCPenneys into five tenant spaces. One that's about forty-five thousand square feet, another one that's, I don't know, eighteen thousand, and then three of them that are about twenty-five hundred square feet. And then they're removing the, what I would call, I suppose, the south side of the building by Main Street. They're taking out a portion of that and putting in recessed loading bays there, two loading docks. So, those are the two items for next week, or next week, next month.
All right. And Commission, anyone have anything for other business?
Move to adjourn?
One second.
Motion by Casey, second by Schmoki, to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Meeting's adjourned.